Good evening and welcome to the Norfolk Board of Selectmen's meeting on Tuesday, October 20th. My name is Jim Lehan. Mr. Palumbo, who is on his way, will be here momentarily. To my left is my associate, Mr. Bugby. To his left is Jack Hathaway, our town administrator. And sitting in for Marion Harrington is Sue Jacobson this evening. Thank you, Sue, for doing this. Jack, would you read the agenda, please?
I would be happy to. Meeting for the Board of Selectmen for October 20th, 2015. First order of business, we have town meeting preparation, including considering opening the warrant and closing the warrant to potentially remove an article on the Southwood Overlay zoning district. We have action items, including appointing an associate planning board member, a member to the Board of Registars. We have the DPW director in. Here he is. With consideration for snow rates, for contract drivers and labor rates, and as well as to accept the, to consider accepting the joint salt bid with Medfield. We have, I guess, just kind of the closing discussion on hunting requests that we had on town property. And then further discussion on, to consider the town's right of first refusal on Chapter 61A property on Boardman Street. And then discussion items, we have been notified that by the police and fire unions that they would like to formally, they have formally requested that we be in contract negotiations. And I have some health insurance information, financial information for FY 2017. And just be reminded that everybody, that this is both audio and videotaped.
I guess I won't have to say that now then.
Just want to make sure we covered it one way or another.
All right, first item. Do I have a motion to open the warrant?
So moved.
Second. We, in our last meeting, for those of you that were with us, we've been working a long time on this Southwood Overlay zoning article. And had planned on bringing it forth on November 17th town meeting. There were some open issues that we've been working on that we were not able to bring to closure within the sufficient time period we felt to put this on the November ballot. We have, just, just to update, since we have made this decision to not go forward with it as time, that does not mean that we are not hoping to continue to go forward with the project. I'll speak for me, and then you jump in, but I think that the financials of this project are very well suited to the town. But there are issues that we're concerned about. It's kind of a situation where we don't know what we don't know. We've been trying to figure that out. We want to be sure that we protect the town. And that if something happens, that the deal doesn't go through, or another buyer comes in, or he buys it and sells it, or whatever might happen, we want to be sure that the agreements we have in place stay in place. So we've had conversations with Mr. Vallone since we made this decision, and he understands the issues. And he's requested a meeting again with the zoning committee on the 27th of October.
Next Tuesday, yep.
And then he's, and so he is continuing to go forward. He understands our issues, and he at least verbally has committed to work through those issues with us. So it will not be on the November 17th agenda. In fact, it can't be, because the planning board did not hold its public hearing. And in order to post it again to hold its public hearing, there isn't sufficient time to do so. So it is definitely not going to be on the November 17th agenda. So that said, I would ask my associates, do you, we have a choice. We could IP it, and that would give us the opportunity to have a discussion around it as to why we are where we are. No one could move it back on anyway, because the public hearing wasn't held. So it would be disallowed by the Attorney General, even if someone did do that. So, or we can just remove it and do a report as part of a committee report. So what do you think?
I would favor, excuse me, I would favor the committee report. Just, I mean, not that I'm not open to discussion, but let's finalize. I think we're making great progress with George, too. And our goal is always, our goal's always been to protect the town in Norfolk, make sure we get the revenue we want and what we need. So I'd rather do it once we have the development agreement in place. And we can address it during the committee report.
Okay. I don't think we'll have it finished by the 17th of November, by any means, but I think we'll at least have a pretty good feel whether we're going forward with it or not by then, I hope. So your opinion is to remove it?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we've opened the warrant. Do you want to make a motion to remove the article?
Yes, I make a motion to remove.
Article nine.
Article nine, the Southwood Overlay zoning article from the warrant.
I will second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to close the warrant.
Do we have any other activity on it? I don't believe we do, do we?
Motion to close the warrant.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Moving right along.
Action items, we had, I know Jennifer West was interviewed by the planning board, and I think the thought was that this, this group would watch that and consider. I know she was.
I watched it.
I watched it, too. They were unanimous. She was impressive, I think. Willing and able, and seemed competent to serve.
Want a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Jennifer West as associate planning board member.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And we have, please consider appointing Jerry.
Could I ask one request on that? I apologize. I noticed in watching it, nobody really shared with her her responsibilities. I mean, a lot of good conversation and talked about the board, but there really wasn't any, and it may not have been the appropriate time. But can we be sure, and you were going to ask our new town council to reaffirm that opinion, can we be sure that whatever it is, that we at least make sure everybody understands the roles and responsibilities?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Makes sense.
Sorry.
And then please consider appointing Mr. Jerry St. Ammon as a member of the Board of Registars, Republican.
I move to appoint Jerry St. Ammon as a member of the Board of Registars, Republican.
I will second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Jerry. Jerry's been doing this a long time, so we appreciate it.
Just, so Jerry will expire June 30th, 2018, and Jennifer will expire June 30th, 2016. The associates always a one year.
Associates a one year, always.
All right, Mr. McGee, I think if the board doesn't mind.
You want to go down to the 61A, just, and then?
Sure.
And then, just hopefully Jeff will get here.
Sure.
For Mr. McGee.
This 61A property, I know Jim said he went out and looked at it. This was just, homeowners interested in selling this as a residential property. It was in 61A for horse, raising horse lessons and raising of equine, whatever, whatever that category is. Beyond my expertise.
You got that narrowed down?
Yeah. I just throw out a bunch of horse terms, as many as I know. And my daughter would be ashamed. And so now they're interested in selling it as residential property. And in order to do that, they have to, well, really, really at the time they're under purchase and sale, would be our opportunity to step in and take over a, as the buyer. But I think in looking, and we've done this before, in looking at, trying to create the best market for them, they're trying to, they want to see if the town will step out of, you know, our opportunity, so that they continue to have this as a single-family house. So they can market it and not have the concern over the town stepping into the, into their buyer's place.
No question, you want to talk to the?
Well, I went and looked at the property. I walked it. I just asked to delay it, because it abuts the school.
Yep.
And to our ball fields. And I thought there might be an opportunity to see if we could negotiate to get some of that land, to potentially put in a field or two. And so I went over and walked it, and it's really not practical.
It's heavily treated, I know that.
Heavily treated, and not really, a good idea on Google Earth, not a good idea in reality. Okay, so. Do you have a motion?
Yeah, motion, I make a motion to vote that the town forgives its right of first refusal under Mass. General Law, Chapter 61A, regarding 86 Boardman Street.
I will second. Any further discussion?
Maybe we should just have a, sorry, I should have told you this ahead of time, but I was just, as you're saying it, I'm thinking maybe we should have like a time period for that, you know? Forego your right of first refusal for any transactions that happen over the next year. Just so that if they decide to hold on to the property, you know, you may want to, 10 years from now, the town may want to exercise its right of first refusal if.
Well, how would that work? I mean, we've had 61As many times, but I've never had that happen. So how would that work?
Well, like with the.
Because it's, it's still 61A property.
Well, it would still, if, so this is, this is in the, what we're, what we're trying to vote here, and maybe we should word it carefully, is we're trying to vote it so when this property owner sells it to the next property owner, we're not involved in that transaction. You know, assuming they're going to sell the property in the next three to six months. Once the next property owner has it, and it's still listed as Chapter 61A, because they'd have to go through a process with the Board of Assessors to take it out, if they go to sell it, well, we'd be able to exercise our right of refusal, right of first refusal the next time that it gets sold. I guess I was just thinking, you know, what happens if they decide not to sell it? And then five years from now, they go to sell it? I just, I guess I'm not giving them an open, I guess I'm just trying to avoid giving them an open time period forever, to, you know, that we could be challenged on to say that, well, the town said they're not going to take their right of first refusal. I have every expectation they're going to sell it in the next couple of months, because it's already on MLS, but. Understand?
Yeah, no, I get what you're going to happen.
I understand the issue, I'm just trying to think it through.
I mean, normally, like, the times that we've, we've had a town meeting for Chapter 61A is, is once there is a bona fide purchase and sale on a piece of property, like the Cranberry property on Park Street.
Weaver property.
Yeah, the Weaver property.
Yep.
So, because we weren't willing, well, I don't think anybody ever approached us before they tried to sell it, but, you know, we wouldn't have, I don't think we would have given away that right, because that was, those were big, big pieces of land.
Can we, I'm assuming we can put a timeframe on our waiver?
I think so. It's, I would think so. It's, it's ever in the motion. That's what we're going to go back and look at anyway, when they, when they go to, lawyers try and, you know, do a title search on a property, they're going to see if we gave up our right. Again, it's not, I'm not, I'm not expecting.
So we could say, hypothetically, we could say something that we give up our right of first refusal through June of 2016.
Exactly, yeah.
Should the property not sell by that time, the town reserves the right to reconsider, or something like that. Is that what you're saying?
That's, that's exactly what I'm trying to say. Just, just, again, just, you know, I'm thinking of the scenario, if it doesn't sell for some reason, 10 years from now.
Right.
It might be a very valuable piece of properties to the town. You know, at that time, we may need to expand the school, or, you know, whatever.
And giving up our right of refusal, and they sell it, and then a new buyer comes in, and it still retains 61A. If it's a new buyer, then that right of refusal is back on the books.
Correct. They can take it off, but they have to go through the process.
Well, they can eliminate 61A, but they've got to pay the back taxes.
Tax taxes, exactly.
Okay. What do you think?
I'm fine with that.
So just a friendly amendment to.
Yeah, friendly amendment.
So what do you want to do?
Yeah, right of first refusal, you know.
Through June 30th, I would even say 2018, or something, I mean, 2017, or.
Let's just, I mean, it's a year from now, that's a six month minimum.
Well, I mean, if you, why don't we put it just, suggestion, maybe just through the end of 2017? I mean, that's, that's 14 months.
To the end of 2016.
16, excuse me, that's 14 months.
Yeah, that's great.
At which time we, we, they would have to reapply for our relinquishing our rights to purchase.
Right, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Have you got, any chance you got that?
She's very good.
I'm okay, that's no problem.
As is Marion.
So good for you, sir.
Good for me. No, makes sense. I mean, I don't think, like you said, I don't think it's a immediate issue anyways, and they're going to always come back.
Yeah, I know. Sometimes I worry about little silly things.
Well, that's a little sitting, all right. I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
If you're wanting new health insurance, I didn't hear back, so I'm assuming he must.
Maybe, I think, I had it on my calendar, I'm not sure, yeah.
Health insurance, I just want to, you know, we've gotten the first, we've gotten the first shot over the bow, I guess you call it, from Maya, saying that.
I would call it more of a broadside.
We've been, we've been T-boned by Maya, saying that the ballpark of rates increases next year is about 15%. It's, you know, there will be, there will be a range.
We tell that's unacceptable.
I suspect it won't be far off of that. And Jim, Jim was at part of the meeting. I wasn't, but I know you had some discussions about plan makeups, et cetera, and there certainly is some room for change there.
Well, the, this is just based on Maya. There are other providers, obviously, in other communities, but in Maya, we have one of the richest plans in terms of benefits that they offer. In fact, she thought it was actually the richest plan. Fashionately known as a Cadillac plan. And that's good news for our employees, but that's one of the reasons. We also apparently have high experience. It's not been a good year, which is unfortunate, because that means we have folks that are not, are in need of medical care, and that's not a good, you know, we want people to be healthy. So we don't wish that. But the other thing that's somewhat alarming is that the, if the law doesn't change, and you know, elections can make a difference here, but in 2019, we're going to pay close to $400,000 in penalties.
If we keep it that way.
With this plan design.
Yeah, we can't, we can't do this.
That's, that's 20%, you know, 18% of our premium. That isn't an option. Now, a lot can change between now and 2019, but if the law remains as is, we're facing $300,000 to $400,000 penalty because of our plan design.
So I think it makes sense to start trying to change.
It's illogical to me, that when you provide benefits that are really good benefits.
Right, you get penalized.
They penalize you for that, but that's the way the law is written. And so we're going to have to figure it out. I mean, I don't know whether, you know, the election will make any, have any impact, could or could not. We're not going to get into a political discussion, but, but we have some substantial healthcare costs facing us in the next couple of years.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I don't, I, I wish I had a silver bullet. You know, I'm, I'm a big proponent of having lower premiums and having higher copays, you know, in certain situations.
Well, the biggest difference between our plans and the other plans are in copays.
Right.
Most of the plans have a $300 deductible before their benefits are paid. We have zero.
Right. And we could, you know, and we can, for the employee's point of view, we can soften that with, we already have with flexible spending accounts, but there are other.
But not many people participate in it.
I know that, because that's not my fault.
No, no.
It's Sue's fault.
I do, too. I do, do my work.
I think Bob does.
Flex spending? Why not? You're going to spend, if you have a monthly.
Sorry, yeah, I woke him up.
I mean, if you have monthly pill bills, I mean, why wouldn't you anyways? You're all going to pay the money.
I was shocked when they told me that we had so few people participating in flexible spending.
Maybe it's time to maybe talk to them about it again. I don't know how often they know about it. I know Daniel in a room, right?
We'll have another education process.
I mean, just get a look, I mean, it's just people out there, and if you have like monthly pill prescriptions right there, it's coming out of your money anyways, and you get access to it all day one, which I always like. You get the whole funding amount, I don't know how our plan works, mine does, right? I get my whole $2,000 on my new benefit year.
Yeah.
It's great. And then if I have money left over, I get glasses. You always, you always use it.
I don't know why folks don't take advantage of that.
Back when I had glasses, that was, that was the great, that was the best thing, you know? That was like the safety net at the end of the year. It's like, oh, I got money. But that's, that's the concern that I hear from some of the employees, is.
No, it's about, I've, I've.
They worry about losing the money.
I've stolen away, one year I threw away like $600. Anyway, I should just, I bought contacts now for my daughter, so I could figure it out now. And you used to be able to get aspirin, so unfortunately, it's tight. It was great, because everyone uses aspirin.
You used to be able to get over the counter stuff.
Yeah, and that's too bad, they took that away. But I mean, prescription, and again, just, just at least minimally do, everyone should do flex spend for your pill amount, if you have pills. If you don't have pills, then maybe you don't need flex spend, but to me, it's, you know, every time I go $1, you got a $10 copay.
Everybody your age is, is on.
Yeah, it's on millions, yeah. Thankfully, not going to, but I'm only on one prescription, so it's all right.
Fortunately, same age as me, so I can.
Yeah, if you keep going, it's not going to be on more than one.
You guys done?
Yeah. Healthcare done. Entertaining? Trying to fill some, trying to fill the gap here. We're waiting for Jeff, we don't know.
I don't think Jeff's going to join us tonight, I think.
He's missing out on a rousing.
Bob, you want to come join us? Before your medical coverage expires?
Al?
Al, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
You look good, Al. Thank you, I appreciate that. Nobody up here ever compliments me.
Hey, nice shirt. Yeah, I like that.
He told me he was going to have a nice time on tonight.
Wait, I didn't get that one, what?
There's a sale at BJ's, sir.
Yeah. Bob's.
Bob's.
Bob's, my house.
Nice to see you, sir.
Good to see you. Hearing just a couple of things. See if you guys.
Who do you want to start?
You have, I have, in your packet, we have the joint, the salt bid and the contract drivers. Which one are you doing first, snow or?
Well, there's the salt bid, which is just an acknowledgement that we don't have a contractor sign or anything, but just to inform you that the, the salt bid, the, is put out by, the town of Medfield has come in and they've approved themselves a couple of, awarded a couple of contracts to Eastern Mineral and backup to Morton Salt, Inc. As you can read the front page, there's a slight, there's an increase, not a slight increase, a substantial increase, if you ask me, at $5.82 a ton to our primary supplier. And $3.91 to our alternate supplier.
So Eastern is your primary?
Right.
And Mid-America is your alternate?
Right. Can't believe, I don't remember ever hearing about Mid-American salt.
We don't have the capacity to pick up, do we, really?
No.
I didn't think so.
We worked hard to try and get somebody to pick up last year, and it didn't work out for us, right?
So we're dealing delivered rates, no matter what.
Yeah. It's, you can't, even if we had a truck, it would be, it'd cost more money.
Yeah, I kind of figured.
The gas and time, and all of that.
Yeah. But the thing is, they don't have it, they really, to me, cheat the system, because they don't have an FOB. They, they don't give us a, a bid option to go pick it up there. They don't want us picking it up there. They have their own, they've subbed out their own truckers, and that's the way they want it to be. They want us going down to their plant, all the different towns, so.
Why were there so many no bids?
I don't know. I didn't really study this, other than, you know, I gave it a good look today, and it's the real unexciting bid for me.
Who did we use? I know Eastern Mineral sounds familiar to me, and Morton, is that, that's the?
Morton.
That's the one you battled with a little bit last year, right? Wasn't it?
I'm not sure if it was Morton or Eastern. I think they're brothers, in different towns.
Is it just us in Medfield that do this together?
No, there's like 19 towns on this.
19 towns, okay.
I, I'm not sure exact number. I think there may be 19 in Serge, I can get them both mixed up sometimes.
How much are, are, just, I'm just curious. I mean, I know last year we ran out.
Yeah.
How much are you going to, what are you thinking of doing this year?
Well, when we entered the bid, we put in a quantity, an estimate, about 3,000 ton. So if you pulled out your calculator, and we go through the 3,000 ton, you want to multiply that times the price, you know, that's.
No, I wasn't thinking, I was thinking how much, because you also had trouble getting it when we ran out. That's what I was thinking.
Well, last year was extraordinary. It was the temperatures, it wasn't the snow.
Right, it's so cold the whole time, right?
It just wouldn't melt, and.
I was just curious if you were adjusting one way or the other, or, because it doesn't go back.
Do we have the capability to take more, I guess, is kind of the question, right?
I mean, it doesn't go back.
We really don't.
I'm just wondering.
No, we, we put it inside, and we max out our, our salt shed. To put it outside, we'd have to cover it, and it fuses under rain and the heat and the thaw, you know? So a lot of people do, but I mean, we just got to manage it. I've got a couple of ideas about application this year. You know, when we go out and we get called, we go out with eight trucks. And, you know, it would have to come with your approval, that if, this year we went out and we had a, a situation where it was just spots, you know, it snowed and it wasn't that bad, that we go out with four trucks. And we concentrate on the mains and the secondaries, and the hills, and the school areas, and stuff like that. But they go into every single neighborhood, sometimes it just, we're trained to do that, and we do. And I just want a meeting with my superintendents to see how they feel about that, maybe just back off those streets. And they're flat, and, you know, it's going to be a call every single storm, but that would be our goal, to do that. It's, it's always kind of our goal to make that call, but it's just so easy to go out and just blanketly cover the town. And I don't mean thickly, I mean with a, with an application, but.
We've had this discussion a few times, you know.
I know we have.
Remember we've had it back when Butch was here, I think we had it early when Bob was here. And I just, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a money problem versus customer service problem. And, you know, people have a high expectations for us, when, when the salt crews don't go out as quickly as, as they would like, you know, people are, get frustrated. I'm of the mindset that this is New England, and the secondary, you know, that the neighborhood roads don't have to be down to the, to the bare service, surface. If you're going to go out in a snowstorm, you better have a four-wheel drive vehicle is, you know. But some other, some people disagree with that.
I don't think, well, it's not, I like the salt.
Or, you know, a vehicle that is capable of traveling.
It's not even the modest, I always worry about the black ice and the stuff that I think you guys are great for, when you get the reports from the police, it's slippery, that's scary. I mean, icy snow, like you said, crazy people go out in the snowstorm, but they like it, and they're the four-wheel drive. crazy people go out in the snowstorm, but they like it and they have the four-wheel drive. I don't mind driving in the snow as much as I don't like to be icy, the worst is the ones you can't see, or nighttime.
The only way, the only way that we could do it, um, what I'm suggesting, is that we, you know, we put on a campaign to inform people now, not when it's snowing out and they call. We're gonna tell everybody ahead of time, listen, if you're on a side street, it's relatively, a cul-de-sac, it's relatively flat, we may not get to you in a couple of hours. Drive safely, you know, it's just, either that or we go out and we sand it. This is sanding, not plowing, we're talking about. We're gonna plow everything, all the time, everywhere. This is just sanding. If we go out and plow ten times, we go out and sand thirty-two times. That's the difference. We get called at five o'clock in the morning and we just gotta get in there and, and we don't question what streets we do, we just do everything. So, all bets are off then.
Is this an issue of manpower or money?
I'm thinking money. I never like to compromise money and safety. But quite simply, these cars are coming out now with all-wheel drive, almost everybody's got one, you know, something where they could drive safe, but you know, we're gonna get Main Street, we're gonna get the hills, we're gonna get those kids and the buses safely to school, but do we really gotta go down to Village Green? You know? Right away? You know?
Well, I, I, see, I err on the side of safety. I, I think that our roads are narrow. They, they're hilly.
Yeah.
They're difficult to navigate in a snowstorm, regardless of whether you got four-wheel or two-wheel, they're difficult to navigate. People are gonna drive what they're gonna drive, we can't dictate that. You know, most, we've got a lot of vans in this town and they're all front-wheel drive. The majority of them are all front-wheel drive.
Which is, which are excellent.
I, I understand, most cars are all front-wheel drive now anyway, but, but they're not four-wheel. They're, they're, they're two-wheel, front-wheel drive. I just think we should err on the side of safety. I mean, if, if you don't have the manpower to cover it, that's, that's one thing. I mean, you, you can't do what you're not physically capable of doing, but I, I, my own opinion, I would do those roads.
Yeah. Well, you just made a decision because of the-
Well, no, I'm just, my opinion, that's-
Certainly not gonna do anything different than, unless it comes from here, I'm, I'm after it, you know? I just think, you know, I have a-
Well, I, I think of like Marshall Street. Now, you may consider Marshall the main road. But, you know, Marshall Street coming down that hill under 115?
Yeah, that's a hill.
I have seen more accidents on that road. You know, that hill, it's a small road, it's a windy road, it's a short road and it's got that hill that goes into 115 and I've seen a lot of accidents there because you, it, it gets, you know, snow gets pounded down and it doesn't take long for it to get icy. And, um, we got a lot of roads like that.
That's a, you know, it's amazing that we didn't have more accidents on that, so you know what I'm talking about, Al? Because we, we just lost that driver. He was, he just knew, liked that street, so now we gotta, we deal with a lot of things. When a new guy goes, we gotta get another sander in there, little tricks, try going up, uh, what's the name of the street off Leland?
Kingsbury.
Kingsbury. I don't wanna go up there in July and something, that's a joke, but, uh, but it's, the truck's gotta back up there. Because the sand's in the back and it can roll over its own sand and so-
Well, you can only do what you can do, but, but, you know, I wouldn't wanna be in a position of picking and choosing my neighborhoods. That, that concerns me a little bit, you know, I mean, you know, we'll do one, but we won't do another or-
We rarely do your street.
Huh?
We rarely do your street.
It's fine.
It's a quiet road.
You don't have to do my street.
Your road goes straight.
Deal with the other people, you don't have to worry about me.
I don't know where you live.
Yeah, let's get that.
I was thinking your road goes straight through now, it doesn't, right?
That's Jack Hathaway said that, by the way. Jim.
The last thing about salt.
If we were to renew this contract, I don't remember.
We did.
Did we, is there, is there a revocable clause in there?
Must be a termination for, for cause, though, I can come up with a clause.
I can think of a cul-de-sac where you can pile a whole lot of snow during the winter time. I, I just, I, I worry about those two things, Bob. Picking and choosing neighborhoods and, you know, we have an accident in the one we choose not to. I, I don't think that's a good practice. And I just, I think our obligation is to keep people safe as best we can. Just my opinion.
And I agree. And you get calls from those neighborhoods if you don't do them.
Calls aside, I, you know, I mean, it's just, you know-
I'd like to see them come up with some alternative and they, they don't, it's just a, they don't have anything else to do. I think the salt's evil. It's not good environmentally, it doesn't do any, any good for the size of our road. I mean, it, it takes till July before the brown comes out of the grass just in the side and they'll tell them what it's doing to the root systems.
There's no other material you can use?
Well, they got these, these, uh, oil bi-, not, what do they call them? Corn oil or something like that, alcohol-based type products, but if they use them, then they'd be using them in Minnesota, they'd be using them in Canada, they'd be using them in northern Maine, so if they're not doing it, then then something's rotten, so...
Well, I don't wanna be the first.
Yeah. I think there's some truth to it, you know?
There's a liquid calcium product, isn't there?
I think that's the corn syrup. And if you, you know, when it first came out, it was called like Ice Band Magic or something like that. And the, and all the websites came right back to the same owner. They tried to sell it under different names and just, you know, it was a real marketing fiasco. But, uh, we're stuck with salt right now.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm fine. Let's stick with what we do.
Sorry about that, Bob.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
So, do you need us to vote this, or, I mean, I don't think we vote-
Yeah, I think it would be good to vote to accept the bid results for the joint bid, salt bid.
Okay.
I move to approve the joint salt bid as presented by DPW.
Second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, you got the easy one out of the way.
Yeah. Secondly, made a recommendation to increase contract plowing rates, equipment rates, money for the drivers and labors. As, uh, written on the front page. Story behind this is that we haven't gone up on our rates in the last three years. Supplied you a, uh, a cost comparison on the last page.
That's not much of an increase.
Did it go away?
Medfield?
Yeah.
Same thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure, if you can see that.
Oh, I, I looked at it too, I mean, like you said.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with it, Bob.
Because otherwise, these-
They're very reasonable rates.
Choices, they don't have to necessarily work for us and you want good people and you want people to stay, so...
This here is something that we need to, um, we, I probably should've had it in front of you even a month ago if I was smart enough to do so, just so we could, uh, we wanna advertise in the paper, we put a ad in the paper to have contractors come, because you never really know, up until November sometime, who really is signed on. You know, some, some towns have incentives where they pay each con, they guarantee $1,500 upfront or $2,000 upfront and then they work against it. And that money, you know, when is it, never gonna snow, it's just not gonna happen, so... But it does give them guaranteed money to purchase insurance for equipment through the winter. We're not asking for that, that's something we can look at in the future, if we ever have a hard time getting contractors. Get some good boys out there, though.
I actually thought you were gonna have, I thought the increases would be more than this, so...
I'm fine, no, I think you said we're under, you know, we want, we want good people to come.
You know, the one thing that we do that a lot of towns don't do and you don't see it in here, we give an hour of travel time. And if you add that into eight hours and you're, you know what I mean, it's just, and sometimes that's a huge selling point.
Do you have a motion?
I move to approve the, uh, contract driver and labor rate as recommended by the DPW.
I will second. Any further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hopefully we don't use them at all this year, Bob. Maybe we're a miracle, not even once.
Well, Jack and I were talking about that, there, there's some talk of, first off, they came out and said it's gonna be another devastating winter and then I'm hearing the El Nino may have an effect on us that will keep us warm this winter.
Who knows? It's New England.
Yeah, it is what it is. It's New England.
What, what have you got, have you got anything still hanging for roadwork between?
Yes, King Street. Um, I think a week from this Saturday, we're gonna pave King Street. And it's only a 300-ton application. If I were to do it during the week, I'd wait for the buses to go by and then at 8:30 would come out and would pave it, try to get out of there at 2 o'clock. The timing of that is a little bit hair-raising, kids and buses and there's a hundred buses that go up and down that street, so it'd be better if we can do it on a Saturday. Right now, the, the paving contractors that we're on the contract with are going crazy trying to beat the winter. It's something I'm used to every single year. To get them at all, you're lucky, if you don't do all your paving, mostly in the summer and early fall, but, uh, I think I might throw another street on that. It's, um, to make it a full-day farm, there is some need on a street, um, do you know the, uh, street that goes down by the airport where they fly the little airplanes? North Street?
Oh, yeah. As you're going towards Rentham and you turn left towards, towards the state, Million Mile Field.
Renthamhead.
Oh, I know, oh, you have the street down, it goes by the school down in the back?
Yeah.
Uh, I can't think of the name of it. I travel a lot.
Well, it's, it's North Street.
North Street.
Yes, North Street.
Off of Shear.
Yeah, across from Merrill Lake and it goes down there.
Yeah.
And Renthamhead paved all the way up to the town line. And I wish they had told me, Irving Priest was there at the time, because that's when you join up with towns and you say, hey, let's, let's do the last 500 feet, you know? Or whatever it is. So, I think I might go around the corner, there's a track machine that puts out the asphalt, so they go down King Street and then we can just go truck down there and just lay out a thin layer of stuff because, uh, street's falling apart. And then at some point, and this isn't the meeting for it, um, I'd like to get my thoughts together on some neighborhoods that would like to go paving next year, but it's, again, I'm not ready for you right now, but there are some neighborhoods that if we don't pave them, we're gonna get yelled at.
How's that Culver, down there, off of, right, why am I bringing it up?
On Union.
No, not on Union, um, right, right down near you.
Well, there's Diamond Street that's done.
No, I know Diamond, the other one, down the other way.
Down the other way, tell me which one.
On Union by the little pond?
No, no, no. Well, that one too, but, but, um, why can't I think of the street that goes down by the lake?
Oh, you're talking about the dam.
Yeah, the lake, yeah.
I'm, I'm too afraid to go down there and look under it.
So, it's that good, huh?
This, there, well, actually, he took me down there one time and there's a big nasty snake under there and he, as I'm sticking my head under it, he goes, oh yeah, watch out for the snake that hangs down from the- That wasn't very nice at all.
Family of snakes that live down there, but...
Is that gonna hold up to the winter?
Oh, yeah. It is, but I mean, we're, we're rolling the dice all the time. And I was just talking to Cole today about Lawrence Street, we're gonna put a, a patch together application on it.
On the bridge area?
Yeah, then I kinda held off a little bit because it is structurally sound enough to, you know, by, I keep an eye on it all the time and stuff like that, but, uh, but there's a potential for a development going up to the, uh, the old man property, so we kinda waited and, uh, if nothing is presented or proposed to the planning board by next year, I'm gonna go in and do that. I still have the money for it, we have approved it through chapter 90. So, it's just sitting there. So, it's kinda like an underpinning job. But don't know the real structural integrity of that bridge because, you know, just, unless you have professionals to go out there and do some coring and stuff like that, but what you can see, there's, uh-
1914, I think, was that bridge?
Right around there, yeah. So, it's a hundred years old, concrete runs out, starts to become less effective after 50 years. I don't know how they know that, but that's what's going on.
Okay, so, um, I mean, there's one other question I had for you. Just, just went, you got me all distracted.
Something about the Sesquinton, Sesquin Centennial?
You're all over the place tonight. The one on Diamond Street, you did mention that, thank you. I wanted to get back, is that one?
Oh, that's done and-
It's all done?
Yeah.
Everything's all taken care of?
The street itself needs to be paved, but, um, you know, that's the-
Not, not Diamond, Union.
No, Union.
That one needs to be done.
Yeah, it's your fault.
Well, you did one.
Union needs to be done and I'm gonna-
One by the pond?
Yeah.
Union.
Union needs to be done, it needs to be totally reconstructed, that's a design engineered type thing, I'm not gonna take a shot at guessing on that. So, there'll be, I'm gonna spend this winter to do something like that. In the meantime, I'll, I'll keep it together for, uh, this winter, before it gets too frosty. I know it's gonna last another winter, but it's starting to come apart, yeah.
Yeah, Scott was just asking about the grant we got for City Mills and Lawrence Street. Talking to Rob, he says I eat very skeptical that we're ever gonna actually see that money.
Are you surprised?
No.
It was like a half a million bucks, it was a decent amount of money.
Half a million bucks.
It seemed like it would go a long way, but-
That's just the study.
Yeah, that's what you mean, yeah.
Oh, the scary parts after that.
Yeah, what they find.
Yeah.
There's some new, uh, there is, there's some new, uh, Department of Transportation capital conversation meetings coming up, and I'm gonna go to one of those and talk about, find out what types of new grants there are will be available for the upcoming years.
Okay. Anything else? Bob, thanks very much.
You got it.
Good to see you.
We should do this again.
Al?
I'm sure you did a great job.
Thank you.
You look great, by the way.
Do you have any questions?
Nice time.
Tell Jack thank you.
Do you have any questions?
I don't think I have any questions.
Welcome.
You're doing a great job, Bob, the, the roads never look better, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
And the water never tasted better, Al.
Great water.
You're bottling it and selling it now, Al, huh?
We have so much of it. We have a glut.
Okay. Request for consider permission on hunting on town property.
Well, and I know, I know you had each gotten back to the, either me or to the, uh, requester, but I thought since we'd had discussions about it, we might wanna just vote it formally at a meeting, but...
Well, the specific request was for Town Pond.
Right, which is conservation land.
And I, I had since learned that, and I should've known this, that Town Pond was conservation land. And, uh, any hunting on town conservation land has to be approved by the conservation board.
Also, you can approve, I thought it wasn't even allowed, so they could approve if they wanted to, so if someone goes in front of the conservation? And then we have a say then, too?
I would assume that we would wanna have both, both of us.
I think we both would have to approve it, but we can't approve it without the conservation board.
I think Jeff did a good job talking through that.
Yeah, I do too.
Well, all that question, I mean, I, I went back and forth, I have to admit, but then I think just, but chiefs don't raise, just the issue of- The unexpected is if you're not used to having hunting on town property, then to come across a hunter or to come, you know, you could be out there. I, I think this gentleman's request was, was fine and sensitive.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll admit, I didn't have an issue with it. I, that's my view, but, um, I respect the dialogue you have with the chief and
Yeah, I mean, I just-
But it's a mute point without conservation's approval.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's, certainly not the best area, you know, in the center of town, um, either. You know, I just think, um, you know, let's say one is, one is, uh, successful and, you know, the deer is being dragged out of the woods over there through, you know, onto Main Street, I mean, I'm not sure that that's a very good situation.
Well, I don't think they'd do that, I mean, they would drive down, there's a road that goes right to Town Pond and they would, they would drive down into the town, right by Town Pond, there's parking back there.
I was just saying, it's just coming out of the far end.
But, I mean, I, none of that, but I, it's, that's not the issue. The issue is, is that it's, there are homes that do about it over on the other side. But anyway, it's a mute point without conservation's approval, so...
So, we'll tell the deer not to go there. The, uh, yeah, that's fine, and I, he's-
Do we wanna talk about it in a broader sense, about anyone hunting on town property?
And, and I'm not, I don't have a, uh, dog in the race or whatever, whatever this is, I just, I'm, I have some concerns that the deer population continues to grow and, uh, Department of
Wildlife, I think.
Wildlife just announced, you know, kinda unprecedented and they're having, they're having, hunting on Blue Hills.
Five days.
Yeah.
And do that town, across the, yeah, across the mass.
Well, Medfield outlawed it and then they had to change their decision because they were getting overrun by deer population.
So, I, you know, I have conservation land behind me, I see, you know, frankly, 10 years ago, I saw more deer, so I'm not, I don't think we're getting, my experience and is not, that we're not getting vastly overrun in the last couple of years, but, but it seems like it's higher than it is, has been the last couple of years. I'll see eight deer out behind my house on a fairly regular basis. So, I just, at, at some point, and I don't know when that is, it's gonna become a problem that, you know, we'll have to have, I think we'll have to have some hunting in town, but, again, that may not be the right property, so, you know? Yeah, I, I mean, I think the challenges are that, um, you know, with the, the Town Pond location, you know, there's some pathways and such which are fairly proximate to, um, the area where there was interest in hunting. Now, you know, if, if the town, the Board of Selectmen is authorizing an individual and there's proper, um, communication, coaching, if you will, in terms of what's acceptable, what's not acceptable, you know, I think certain situations can be manageable, manageable for, uh, whether it's a singular individual, what have you, I think the communication can be realistically conducted. My concern is that, um, you know, what we allow for, one, we need to be prepared to allow for others if others come forward and that's where, you know, I'm not sure where that burden would fall in terms of the proper communication and protocol to make sure that, um, you know, it is being done safely. And I, although I haven't done, you know, I haven't hunted for several years, I mean, I, I personally have hunted previously in my life, so I'm not against hunting per se, but, um, you know, I'm more accustomed to it taking place in more remote areas, so I think, uh, you know, there are most likely areas within the town that would be appropriate, but I think it's gonna be probably a case-by-case basis that we're gonna have to evaluate it and, um, discuss and determine what protocol is necessary and how to implement, particularly where things can be happening on off-hours, you know, who's going to communicate properly to the, the hunters in terms of what's acceptable, specific locations and whether there's any particular protocol that, you know, they need to follow and I, and I haven't totally thought that through. Those are my concerns.
Yeah, I mean, I went back, you know, when Liz and I were first married, we lived down on the end of Union Street, close to Rentham and, uh, we used to go walking through that airplane field that we were just talking about and out into the state land and, and go all the way over to Shire Park, which wasn't there at the time, but, uh, and we were, we were amazed one time, we were just walking through the woods stupidly, uh, in November and with the two dogs and we walked into a big pack of hunters and, uh, we scrambled out of there, but, uh...
Good decision.
Yeah, I just, so, I understand the, the safety concerns, I just, uh, it's happening today, though, on state, you know, whatever.
So, on this specific request, um,
I think we've said no, I just-
We've said no.
Yeah.
And, and, but just to add into that, that it does require a conservation
Yeah.
issue as well, so... And I don't think we have any other requests, do we?
Nope.
At this point, so, okay.
Unless one comes from the audience.
All right, so we don't need to vote, anything else? You want us to vote that?
I don't think that's a vote.
I don't think we need to do that.
I think you-
Okay.
We take no action.
The only thing left on the list was, I believe, the Police and Fire Unions have formally requested that we open contract negotiations regarding their, uh, contracts that expire this coming June. And, uh, one thing Jim and I had already talked about, and we tried to accomplish this at one point, I think we
Staggered, right?
We staggered them, we staggered, they were all in sync with the DPW. Now, we've gotten the DPW out of this same pattern. So, one of the goals is we're gonna try and get these two off of, on a separate section.
Easy for everybody, well, easier.
Yeah.
But one, one of us has traditionally been part of the negotiation team and I, I have been doing the Police and Fire, I think, a long time, I was gonna suggest that, they're daytime negotiations, they're usually not evenings, they're daytime, usually like 3, 4 o'clock in the afternoon. That's tough for you, I'm sure, but could you possibly take one of them?
I, mm-
I mean, you get to decide the date, there's not a lot of meetings.
We'd probably do 5 o'clock if you-
Yeah, I mean, if you need help, I, I'll do one, I mean, yeah.
Okay, so you wanna take fire?
I'll take whichever, yeah, sure.
I'll take place.
Yeah, and we can do-
You okay with that?
Yeah, no, I'm fine with it, no, I can.
I just think it'd be good to get a different face in one of these.
And sometimes, you know, it's good to kinda kick it off with this, with, definitely with the selectmen, sometimes Jim is, Jim is there every single time.
Right, yeah, no.
Other times, we'll work on some of the, you know, the details, uh, you know, on our own, and then bring it back with the selectman, uh, presence.
Sure, like I said, I, I, my schedule's.
It's not a, it's not a.
Yeah, I, I knew it would be tough for you, that's why.
It depends on the day, uh, you know, if we schedule it, uh, with enough notice, I can typically arrange it. I mean, Mondays are the most difficult day for me.
So, Scott will work with Scott.
Yep.
On the fire, and I'll, um, work with Scott, Bragdon, that is, on the police.
You got the guys with the guns, I like that, he can have the guys with the guns.
I get the guys with the gun. Don't start any fires. Um, we did talk about the health insurance, Jeff, and I think it would be good just to talk about it again.
Yeah, we.
Briefly, now that you're here. Go for it.
Well, we, Maya has given us, has met with us and told us that they expect that the average increase for next year will be about fifteen percent across all of their clients.
Gosh.
Yeah. So there will be a range, they'll, they'll, they'll narrow it down over the next couple of months, and they'll start telling us that there's a range, and then, uh, usually the end of January, early. It used to be at the MMA meeting, they would tell us what the.
We should have a.
What our actual rate is, but the last couple of years, it's been a couple of weeks after that. But that's when they'll tell us our, our, uh, exact increase.
What was it last year, I know one gave me hell to thank because we bitted it up, that was the last.
It was about ten percent last year.
Ten, yeah, it was a pretty big jump last year, two years ago, it was low.
Two percent.
Yeah.
Oh, I remember these numbers.
They, you know, we've had a difficult experience here, so I suspect we'll be at the higher range. And we, um, and Jim, you know, Jim sat in on the conversation with, uh, Scott and, uh, the accounting group when they met with Maya, and, uh, you know, they talked about the makeup of our plans, and, and, you know, the Maya woman said that our, our plan design is one of the richer, if not the richest, plan they have, so. You know, that just, again, and we knew that, and that kinda, but that kinda solidifies that conversation we had a couple of weeks ago, and talks about the need to try and, um, or at least that the availability of redesigning our plan a little bit, to add co-pays and, and other things in exchange for reducing the, the premiums, if not, if not reducing the, the increase in the premiums.
So, you know, beyond just having the apples-and-apples comparison, um, do we think, based on the Maya comments, that the current plan would be susceptible, um, to the penalty for the so-called Cadillacs?
In two thousand nineteen.
Answer is yes.
Yeah, two thousand nineteen, yeah.
To the tune of almost four hundred thousand dollars.
So, we, we're gonna try and, you know, that's definitely a goal of ours, to try and avoid that, we don't.
Now, that, you know, that wouldn't be implemented until two thousand nineteen, is what it would go into effect.
Bring up the exchanges, yeah, we'll start talking now, yeah.
Well, but, but you've got an election coming up, and, you know, so the law could change. But if it doesn't change, and it stays in place, and we stay with the current plan, we'd have just under four hundred thousand dollar penalty in addition to the premium increases, uh, which is about eighteen percent, so you could have one year where you could have as much as thirty percent increase in your premium rates. Which is not acceptable for employees or employees.
It's not sustainable, I mean, we'd have to, we'd have to make dramatic cuts other places.
But we, we talked a lot about plan design, um, and, and, and it was great to have her there because obviously she has all the data and the information, and I think thirteen towns, I think there's.
What's that, Maya?
Maya Group, I think, is it thirteen?
No, it was about a hundred towns.
But it, it, we're in a different grouping, we're in a subgroup of that.
No, I wasn't part of that conversation, so.
Oh, okay, but she said we have one of the richest plans that she's seen, richest in the sense that we have, most plans have an upfront two, three hundred dollar family deductible before they pay any benefits, we have not. We have very low co-pays, um, and it's a very rich plan, which is a good thing, I mean, we, we, that's, as Jack said, it's a conscious decision, we wanted to provide good healthcare coverage, but if it's gonna cost us a four hundred thousand dollar a year penalty to maintain that coverage, that's not gonna work.
But she also, did she give you, I guess, Jeff, that was about apples-to-apples in that chart, 'cause I, I do see we have the rich, you know, that part of it, but could she lay, the overlay would be, we also pay the smallest, we also contribute one of the smaller percentages.
Oh, yeah.
So you overlaid both, I think everyone knows.
Well, she doesn't really look at that.
Okay.
I mean, that's not, she gets, she gets a bill, she gets a check from us for a hundred percent.
Right, yeah, I understand, but, yeah.
I'm just trying to think, put in context for people out there listening, too.
No, and that's how we've evolved into the situation we're in, we've saved money here, spent money here.
Right, so it's gotta be a balance, I don't know.
Well, in, in the last ten years, we've gone from fifty-five percent to sixty-three percent. So we, we've picked up a lot of that gap, and that was a commitment we made, and we lived up to it, and we increased it incrementally. I mean, I'd love to go to sixty-five, too, but the problem is if you've got a fifteen percent premium increase, and the potential of a four hundred thousand dollar penalty, three years down the line, it's not, fifteen percent increase is not sustainable. I, I mean, it's just, it'll be the third largest budget.
Yeah, well, it's gonna probably be the third largest budget.
Probably gonna be the third largest budget, anyway, behind the schools. Uh, it's just not sustainable, so, uh, we're gonna have to figure it out. But we're not alone, everybody's facing it, I mean, you know, everybody's got the problem, and, but because our plan is so rich, and you get into the penalty consideration, it's a little bit bigger issue to us.
And we're gonna learn more about the, you know, the, I forget what the name of it is, but the, uh, the model plan, I think it's from the GIC, and, and Maya will, will create a model plan for us, so that.
We know at least.
So that we know that, we know what that, what that option would be if we went down that path of, of going, whether we go to the Maya model plan, or the Maya, you know, it's the GIC-like plan, um, or if we went all the way to GIC, I, I just.
Town's a leading GIC.
Yeah, I have a big, oh, I meant to talk to our Lynn, uh, not Lynn, Julie, McCarthy started yesterday. She's gonna come to our meeting two weeks from now to meet you guys, you can go up and meet her any day you want, um, but our new finance director. But she's from Linfield, and she said they just left, uh, she didn't finish the story with it, but they just left GIC 'cause it was outrageously, it was costing them a lot, because.
Too many choices.
Too many choices, and everybody, everybody chooses the Cadillac plan, so they, you know, they, you look at the financial models, and you say, oh, well, we'll get a certain number of people in, in the low plans, and the medium plans, and the high plans.
Doesn't work, doesn't work.
Ninety-something odd percent of the people go to the, the, it's not really a Cadillac plan, but.
The richest they have.
The richest plan.
Yeah, model, models don't consider human nature.
Yeah, I, I would, I would highly suspect, based on, you know, our people being used to a Cadillac plan, that our people are gonna go to the richest plan at the GIC.
I would, too.
And we can't eliminate which plans they choose, you know, we have to give them the GIC menu.
Well, it's just something that's, that's on the table, that we're gonna deal with at some point.
Yeah.
I was surprised.
Take care of that.
Yeah, and that, and that is to no one's benefit, as far as I can tell, you know, the penalty, and organizations are in a position paying a penalty, that's really money wasted, I think, I mean, I'm seeing that correct, I mean.
Well, it just seems like they're, they're, the, the, behind the, behind the curtain, they're, they're trying to drive everybody to the same healthcare plan, and, and, and being able, they're using this as the, the stick, and then they're gonna use the penalties to help fund other people to get onto the plan that, you know, either on the plan now, and we don't have the money to pay for them, or, or to get more people onto the, onto health insurance, universal health insurance, which again, isn't a bad thing, but.
Not the penalty of like.
But said another way, it's not to the benefit of the employees of the town of Norfolk, for the town of Norfolk to pay four hundred thousand dollar penalty, right?
Well, it would, if, if you take an eight to ten percent increase between now and the next three years, on two point four, two point five million dollars, I mean, we'd be looking at a twenty-five percent increase in two thousand nineteen, on average.
I mean, and you get to that magnitude in terms of, uh, increases, and you think about the impact on the budget in terms of other areas of the budget, you know, and it, it can affect other areas of, uh, the budget as far as the school, I mean, not just.
It's six hundred thousand dollars, that, that kind of increase would be, if, at eight percent, would be about six, close to, that's six and a quarter, six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar increase, on what would probably be, uh, thirty-five, thirty-six million dollar budget.
Yeah, that's two snow and ice budgets, four one last year.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Anyway, well, we won't worry about two thousand nineteen's budget right now. We, and Jack can catch you up on the other things that we covered, book for you. Uh, any other business, Mr. Hathaway?
No, I just, uh, I've had some communication this week with, uh, and last week with the architect for the Public Safety Project, and he's, uh, come back with some revisions to the plan, uh, not finalized, but he's gonna come back with, uh, new versions of the plan, we're still, we're trying to drive down the costs down below where we were four years ago.
Can we put that on our agenda for the next meeting?
Absolutely.
November third?
The ninth, we're having a meeting on the ninth.
A ninth, excuse me.
You can do it on the third, if you want, yeah, we can do it on the third, ninth.
Ninth. We finally figured it out.
So we're not meeting again till the ninth?
We don't meet again till the ninth.
That's great. It's only two weeks.
Two and a half. Almost three.
Under three.
Well, we were trying to work it around town meeting, which is the seventeenth, so we went with the ninth and the twenty-fourth.
Right, I think it was the first, the concept, those, we were gonna meet the first and the third.
The third is Election Day. That was the reason we moved it. You know, and, and, Jack, it might not be a bad idea to, when, when does this go before the advisory board? Is it next, next Wednesday?
Twenty-eighth.
A week from tomorrow?
Week from tomorrow.
Um, would you guys be able to have another meeting before the ninth, just for that purpose, just for the Public Safety Building?
Fine, with any day.
I mean, the ninth is awfully close to the seventeenth, that's the only thing I'm thinking about. I don't wanna do it with the advisory board.
No, no.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about a, a working meeting just with us, um, and, and the building committee, perhaps, and maybe even the architect, uh.
So is there a meeting on the, the twenty-eighth? I have it written on the twenty-eighth that there's a Public Safety Building Committee.
That's for the advisory board, is meeting with the.
Yeah, I, we don't want, that's a different.
Should we work it around, around that schedule?
Well, I, I would rather see a working meeting just for us with that group, that's what I'm talking about.
Those, those meetings tend to go a while.
Well, it, it's a different purpose, I mean, it's, um, I'm talking about a working meeting, like, if we could possibly do it the twenty-seventh, having a working meeting that involves the architect and, you know, at least George, if, you know, to go over this before it goes to the advisory board.
That would be helpful, I would like that.
Could you guys do that? The twenty-seventh?
I can do the twenty-sixth or the twenty-seventh.
I can't do the twenty-sixth.
I can do the twenty-seventh, I can do the, I don't know.
You do the twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
Can you do it, Jack?
I have to skip a Lions meeting, yes, I can do it.
That's right, Lions meeting, I'm supposed to go to that, too, with George.
George Cronin?
No, George Malone, he's going to that meeting.
Oh, yeah, I was wondering if he was still going to that.
Yeah, he's going. Well, this is more important, to be honest with you.
Yeah, 'cause George's thing's not gonna come till spring, anyways, it's up to you, but I'm, I'm available the twenty-seventh, I'm available the twenty-sixth, but you're not.
Unless we did it before the seven P.M., uh.
Could you do it before?
I think my schedule on Wednesday would allow that.
Could you do it before?
The twenty-eighth, I mean?
Yeah, the twenty-seventh.
The twenty.
The seventh, I mean, sorry.
Oh, you're still second Tuesday.
Yeah, I mean, could you do like.
Oh, you're still.
Could you do like.
Jeff's asking, what time, what time's that?
How early could you do it? Cause George is available.
I could do it at six, I'm not sure about five, but I could do five o'clock on the twenty-eighth.
Allow a couple hours.
Yeah, but that's the advisory, that's.
Two hours.
Yeah, but if we wanted to tweak anything, there's no time to do that. How early could you come on the twenty-seventh? Six, five-thirty, maybe?
Maybe five-thirty, maybe.
Yeah, well, we shoot five-thirty.
Let's do five-thirty, you good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that okay, Jeff?
Yeah. It's fine, hey.
The shot.
Oh, Jeff.
Can you get the architect, Jack, hopefully?
Yep, I can ask him, I'm sure he's.
So we're gonna do five-thirty. And then I can, I can still get to the Lions meeting at seven.
Do you wanna do it up, upstairs, or what do you wanna do to?
Well, we can do it here.
We get that table, a little bit more conducive, maybe.
I don't mind it being on TV, I mean, I mean.
Oh, your, your choice, whatever.
You guys okay with it being on TV?
Yeah.
Jack, you all right with it on TV, I mean, we gotta get information out, it's a good time to do it.
I don't care. Doesn't matter, I don't.
Okay with you?
Yeah, that's fine, it's just a little bit cumbersome with the plans, I guess, were they gonna do some things electronic, you think? We'll do digital?
Electronic, yeah, we slide that down.
That would be even better, yeah.
Okay, okay.
I thought you had a dripping faucet next to me.
Well, that day got full pretty quick. All right, so five-thirty, we'll get, do it just public safety. Will you let George know?
I will.
Should anybody, maybe, anybody else, or just George?
I'm with the whole committee now and say, if we can get a quorum, we can have a.
Sure, you form the whole committee, have a party.
So we'll post you guys and the public safety.
Okay. Thanks, guys. I think, I think that would be helpful, to, to have that meeting before the advisory board meeting. You guys agree?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's good, yeah, no problem.
Uh, Scott, you got anything?
I got nothing.
Jeff?
Let's see, um, did you have some conversation, uh, for maybe Scott's benefit, more than the rest of us regarding Southwood? I just wanted to make sure that he's fully on board.
Yep, we talked about that, we, we, we revoted it again.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yep. There have been some conversations since that meeting, by the way, and George is still engaged and still on board, and that's why he is coming on the twenty-seventh, and, um, he has talked to a few members of the committee, he understands the issues, and is committed to resolving them, and so he's going to be meeting with that committee.
At five o'clock.
I know, I know, I'm aware of that.
Okay.
Yeah. But let them go upstairs, yeah, let them go upstairs.
Okay.
We'll, we'll.
I'm not worried about the room, I just wasn't sure if you wanted to go to.
Uh, I know, I'm supposed to be at both. But I can start up there and.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm not a voting member of that committee, anyway.
Okay, that's fine.
So, okay, uh, so, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's it, really, I think, yeah, that, that's important.
And I don't, the rest was just contract stuff and all that stuff.
We voted the other members to, we voted Jennifer, we voted Jerry.
Jennifer West and Jerry St. Ann, and.
And they gave me a three-year extension.
With an, with an out clause, with an out clause, but we can get you out.
Check the minutes, she's got it in there.
Well, we have an out clause, it only takes one selectman vote to oust two, too, that's a whole new bylaw, that's gonna stay there permanently, yeah. How much about our Bob was nice tie, you're not getting his vote, you're not getting my vote again.
Okay. Anything?
Yeah, no, I, I think that covers it, I mean, the Southwood, um, I believe it was at the planning board.
You wanna share yours, I mean, I should, mine.
Well, I, just, just, just so that we're, we remain aligned, um, uh, the chair, Steve McLean, I think he was looking for some perspective in terms of the change as far as Southwood, the fact that it was not going to be on the, the warrant in terms of the zoning overlay district. So, to the best of my knowledge and ability, I shared with, with Steve and the other members of the board, now, of course, two of the other members of the board have been participating in the process, John Weddleton and, and Walter, so, um, so I, yeah, so I, I think we're fully aligned, and I just wanted to make sure that our colleague, Scott, here, was, was aligned with us, and it sounds like he is, so.
I texted you live.
You didn't look at your phone.
I texted you too. We were both watching you.
Live, 'cause I didn't know you guys had voted, you saw my text, like, just like a look at his text, he would not look at your phone, you were very good, did not look at it, I'm like, Jeff, look at your phone, I was like, okay, I'm like, oh, you, 'cause I missed the five o'clock working committee meeting, so I'm like, fine, two or three, but no, I, I, I'm, I'm fine with that, you, you, you explained it perfectly, we hadn't got what we needed to protect the town, and still, and still a viable, good opportunity, I think it will come to fruition, I mean, at least part of the tour to do, I think, you know, we're getting what we want.
There, there, I, just maybe a little more detail on the follow-up conversations, there have been several. He, um, had a long conversation with, um, a member of that committee, not me, a member of that committee who is more versed in the issues, I guess is a good way to say it, um, and it went well, it went well. And, uh, I spoke with him that evening, um, and he wanted to go forward, he is coming to. he is coming to the Lions on the 27th to talk about it. The only thing I said I would bring forward to this board, and it's just a personal view, is that I don't think this should be on the spring warrant. That is not the forum to have the discussion around this kind of an overlay project with town meeting, spring is a busy meeting, you know, and it's, it's financials, budget, all kinds of things, and it will not get the, the level of attention it needs to get, so I, I would suggest that if all of the pieces get put together, and people are comfortable that we've got a pretty ironclad arrangement, then we can call another meeting, we can call, and if you guys, we don't have to answer this now, but I told George that, I said, I would ask the board to consider that. So, just put it on your radar screen, and see how it goes. Obviously, if we don't get all the things nailed, it's a mute point, but it will get lost in the spring meeting.
Yeah, yeah, it is that important, I would, I would think you could make the argument that.
And it's too important.
Warrants it, yeah.
So it really means that the fall meeting is pretty much just public safety. This November 17th meeting, cause there's really not much else on there.
And the chairman of the moderator.
There's, there's one other zoning article, which I, we, we watched your public.
It went well.
It went very well, it went very well.
It did, yeah.
It went very, once people got a chance to explain it.
Yeah.
It ended up going very well, and that was a good thing. So I don't think that's gonna be enormously controversial.
So that didn't change?
It did, the article actually changed? A few things, it was very subtle, it was more interpretation, I think we were all on the same page, it was.
It was an understanding of how it works.
Had to do with how it could, it could be interpreted, so that's why some, some changes were made, but aside from that, I think one of the things that was helpful is a, actually a drawing, and we've since seen, I think, a photograph of a, a building which meets that 40, 46, you know, the 40-foot with the additional 6 feet for the slope roof, which evidently the bookstore in the center of Plainville there, that new bookstore.
Yep, that's tall.
That building models, if you will, the zoning, what our zoning will be with approval of the, the article at town, the town meeting, so it's a good-looking building, I just happened to drive by it today.
So it's two full stories, and then with a pitched roof?
So.
I think there's three stories.
So it's basically three stories, but inclusive of, inclusive of the, the living space, which is within, within the pitched roof.
Yeah, cause you can gable in the back.
Right. And so that's what it had to do with the wordsmith, because of the potential interpretation, you know, for people that aren't involved, when these things get looked at, these, these bylaws, potentially, a couple years from now, somebody interprets it a little differently, and then we've got an issue, so that, that's really what the conversation was about, more than any, any real disagreement between potential applicants, developers, and members of the, the planning board, so, and Ray.
Yeah.
And Ray's, Ray's doing very well, I mean, he's, and he was experienced coming into the job, but, you know, every town, every organization has its own nuances and things to, to work through and figure out, and he's, he's really come a long way, so it was, you know, I credit him for what he's brought to the, the town, and to the, the planning, the planning board, the planning role.
I think, I, I think his people skills are, are helping him build, fit in as much as his planning skills.
Yeah, it was Bob Nicodemus that bought, he brought the sketch, and I think he's submitted, I think, I don't know if it went to Ray, I think, and Ray may have sent it to you, or is going to send it to you, so that it's on your computer for town meeting.
Oh, the sketch, okay.
Of that, of that building, yeah.
Okay.
The diary of the wimpy kid, I guess, bookstore over there, yeah.
Would you be willing to take a question?
We just paid him overtime.
Paying him overtime, anyway, can you, we need a microphone, I was just gonna ask you about some water stuff.
I'll try and answer what I can.
Well, do you know, I should've asked Bob, but I mean, do you know how we're doing on any test wells?
Yes.
I thought you might.
Yes. The MCI Norfolk well, site, I should say, was a failure. We hit refusal or ledge in three different areas, we, we moved in the area we had. We have just gone out to Campbell Forest, we did three potential well drills out there, we hit refusal at 10 feet, we then moved 15 feet away, hit it at 18 feet, and moved a little more away, closer to the wetlands, but not within the 100 feet, you have to be away from them, and they went 27 feet, but the pipe started to bend like it was on, on the outcropping of ledge, so that's a failure there, too. Gold Street well, we've, we've put the 2 and 1/2 in there, we were getting, I believe it was 50 gallons a minute, they drilled down 52 feet, which is the same depth as the rest of the wells we have there, we have two operating wells that are the same depth. They did the pump tests and got 50 gallons a minute, draw down was like 8 feet, so they did the calculations, the engineer did the calculations, we're thinking of putting a 6-inch in, and we might get 80 gallons a minute, so that's an if you one, so that's where we're at there. I did hear there was talk of maybe going back out to Lawrence Street, but that's just, I just heard, I don't know if that's true or not.
What about off of Grove?
Grove Street was, that site, for some reason, was shut down from the start, that I know of.
Okay.
That was put on the table, I should say.
So for town-owned land, we're running out of spots?
Yes, it, it seems to be, and the spots we do have, it seems to have ledge in them. Gold Street area is a nice area, but, you know, you can only put so many straws, and we're gonna end up with a well field out there. We do have a well out there, I, I have questions in myself about it, that we drilled about three years ago, that produced 150 gallons a minute, which is about 80 feet to 110 feet or so, away from the one we just drilled, so my question is, maybe we should go back and look into that well.
Sorry, which one, the Gold Street one?
Is, is that capped, or is it a backup well?
It's capped, yep, but 150 gallons a minute right now would help the town tremendously.
The goal's 300 a minute?
There, yes, that's what our well, we have well 2 and 2A are over there, I believe it's 2 and 2A. Well 2 is the primary well, we get 300 gallons a minute, that's producing, oh, I, I wanna say 30 gallons a foot, it's tremendous, it just keeps putting water out for us. We drilled one 80 feet away, a supplementary well, and it can do the same, but we're permitted for 300 gallons a minute, so we are, right now, pushing the limit at 450, but it's 300 gallons a minute over 24 hours, and we're not running, we're only running 12 to 14 right now, at our peak time, we're hydrant flushing now, so we're using a lot of water, but during the winter months, we're in pretty good shape.
How would this, how would this capped well help? I mean, is it, would it be, is it backup, or would it be as an additional source?
Well, that's the thing, my understanding, and again, I'm not too fluent in the rules and regulations, that much, but we would have to re-permit, and it takes up to eight years to get a actual permitted well, so if you use a supplementary well, you can go right online with it, but it's only, I'm trying to think of the word of, it, it's only, it's a backup, basically, so we could, we could alternate wells, so we're not beating the daylights out of one well, we could use another well, but pretty much, we can, we're only allowed the 300 gallons, we got a max we can take per year.
Is there any more?
But it would help.
Oh, yes, oh, definitely, definitely would help, any water would help, right now.
But is, is there any more room down at Spruce, to, to a supplemental?
Spruce, we did put a supplemental in there, Spruce is our problem, child, if you wanna say.
Spruce also has a lot of mineral content, so you have a lot of treatment down there.
Spruce, well 1, at Spruce, used to put 500 gallons out years ago, I wanna say 12 years ago, it is now down to about 150. So we have a supplementary well in, so we got well 1 there, and 1A, supplementary well we put in.
Is that because of the minerals on the piping?
Yes, the iron, in, in the cone of influence, the iron has, has plugged the screen up. We, we do, we do chemically treat them and, and clean them, as you say, it's expensive, but it does work. The supplementary well seems to be producing more water than our primary there. Like I said, it used to give us 500 gallons a minute, with the 2 together right now, we're getting about 300, 250 to 300, so we've lost 200 gallons a minute, and we've, we've reclaimed it several times, and it just seems like we're not gonna get it back.
But is there, is there any more, like, so like we've done the well field up at Gold Street, is there any room to do another well?
I don't think we have the room at Spruce Road.
I didn't think we had the room either, cause, because Jim, to answer your question about, yeah, the Gold Street, more wells definitely help, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but at Gold Street, we're only licensed or permitted at the end of the day for 300 gallons a minute. We can get more water there, and we've got more wells there, then we, we could actually draw more than 300 gallons a minute, but at the end of the day, they're only gonna give us 300 gallons a minute, you know, over 365 days. The, the risk we have is if Spruce Street continues to degrade, and, and we lose that one, we can't, you know, we could probably get some emergency relief at Gold Street while we resolve that issue, but we need to be able to resolve that relatively quickly, at, sorry, at Spruce Street. So he is looking at, and my understanding is, he talked, had a conversation with Steve today, and he's Steve Olson, from Environment Partners, and they're gonna go back and have a discussion, they're gonna look at Lawrence Street.
What about Rentham? Rentham School?
Um, I don't know, we haven't had any, I don't think we've had any more conversations with Rentham yet.
Isn't it worth a visit?
Yeah. Get kicked in the teeth again, it'll be fun.
Okay, so we get kicked in the.
Their well, again, is like our well at Spruce Road, is, is higher in iron.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, but, but at least it's a separate source.
Yes, yes, that, that well, I believe, it's on 200.
And I understand it pumps pretty good.
Yes, it does.
So I, I know we'd have to treat it, but at least it's in, it's a permitted, established well, and they got a tower there.
You're speaking, you're talking the one that's off of Union Street?
Yes, yep, so it could solve a lot of problems.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So that's worth a conversation, even if they do kick us in the teeth.
Yep, I'll bring you.
Do you know who to talk to, though, Jack, about that, I mean, we're not going to state people?
Bob has had some, he's been trying to work his way into the, he has had some informal conversations with the, the daily ops manager there, so we were trying to go kind of the backdoor route, cause when we went the front door route with under Ross, we couldn't get anywhere.
We went political last time. Okay, well, why don't we go to just, let's take the politics out of it, let's just, let the business people go talk about this, and see if we can't work something out.
Yeah, okay, I think that's what Bob's trying to do.
And keep the politics out of it.
Bob's trying one of the very.